And to you, you know who you are. I want to say thank you. It meant a lot to me to know that there's people that really truly care. And so with that, thank you.
Thank you. There anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, Jonathan Rodea. I've been wanting to talk about this issue for quite a while, but I was coming down the road and ran into my kid and his friends. And these are the Red Bulls and these are their drinks, which they're selling to kids, okay? I would love to see an ordinance made, eighteen and younger, that they can't purchase these. Because they had a bag full of them. Kids hang out in my house and so I regulate as I can. But one of the little kids about this big, and they'll drink these things every single day, said he had to have some forty-year-old guy buy it for him outside Dollar General. Then I went and asked. That's basically, on here it says, not recommended for children, pregnant, nursing women, and people sensitive to caffeine. So if you look up the ingredients, it's all kinds of nasty stuff in there too. So I don't know, maybe we can get that put on their ordinance for it. Is it?
Thank you. There's anyone?
Do I need to come up there?
If you could please come up here, it would be appreciated.
Only got two more stand-ups and sit-downs before I... You're okay, I'll come on.
Bravo. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sure glad you do. One thing I appreciate is the lawn work. It's like we pay for leaks and they see that from the bike rodeo. Fucking sure how to bike fold over. Now, my word, that is great. Because I did, you know, it upsets me because we put all these things in for bicycles to ride on. But they don't go down, they don't follow the rules of the road. And the young man over here just said something about the Gatorade or whatever. That starts at home. We don't need to have an ordinance about this stuff. We just need to have people do what they're supposed to do. Just like the guy up the street with all the garbage just laying on the road. That's been there for like ever, three or four times that they come down there and picked it up. Now, I don't need to pick it up. But it paid for it to have it picked up. I can go on up here all day and I shouldn't be here.
Well, you...
Have a nice Saturday evening.
Could you please tell us your name?
No.
No? Okay, well...
Or it's a nimble price, I don't have to tell you.
I wasn't gonna throw anything at you if you didn't. I just thought I was gonna ask you if you would, but you know, you gotta do what you gotta do.
I'm a good citizen. I've been in this town for...
You need to be high towards traffic.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for coming up and making your case. We appreciate it.
I'd like to say a lot more, but...
Yeah, we have two minutes left.
Well, not only that, because when I get agitated, my vocabulary runs out.
Oh, okay. I got you.
I don't need that.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Park, for coming up here for keeping up on these bikes. And I will not yield to somebody on the bicycle on the sidewalk.
Okay.
I will put them off of there. So I'll be the one with the guy standing on the sidewalk on the bicycle on the street.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. Are there any emails or texts that were done? Hands raised or other things, would you? I don't need just the last quarter of the phone number, four four seven four, and they would be talking themselves. Okay. Four four seven four, would you please unmute yourself, state your name, and then go ahead and say what you need to say, please?
Star six.
Oh, star six, to unmute. Okay, person with the phone number last four, four, four seven four?
Four four seven four.
Please, star six, unmute yourself and identify your name and then go ahead and speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, this is Wesley. I'm representing the company Posh and I have an agenda item.
What's your name?
Wesley. My name is Wesley.
Thank you.
At least for the presentation, okay. I think you're addressing something, you are addressing something that's on the agenda. So you should wait until that agenda item is brought up.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other hands raised? Then we will close public presentation and move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar? I'll pull item one. And if there are no other items pulled from consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So much. You have a motion, is there a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Item number one, I just, I can abstain from one thing and not all of them, so I was just, I pulled it because I wasn't here. So is there a motion to approve item number one? I will make that motion. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll second. You have a motion and a second, please vote. And I abstained, I don't know why I did. So the motion carries four yes and one extension. Okay. Reports and staff communications, page fifty-two in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Lawrence, members of the council. So just FYI, we see a little bit of construction work on the front porch area and electrical vehicles over at the police department. We do have a contractor here doing some minor fixes to some lighting outlets in the police department. And then also replacing the current fixtures that are out on the underhang here. Basically, they're just aged and the bulbs that are in that specific outlets, they are no longer manufactured. So hopefully that will be completed by Saturday, by the end of the day on Saturday. And then we also had a street sweeping also occurred on this last Saturday, which was a little bit of an unusual time for us to do that. Overall, we had to secure a different street sweeping vendor this go around, and I think they did a pretty good job. And we'll see and, you know, make an evaluation as to whether we want to continue to utilize the service. It's kind of based on their availability, because they're an outfit from how the humble can be. So when they're on contract or say L Trans or another agency, it's fairly affordable to bring them in to do it. Otherwise, it's, you know, to try to get a schedule on specific days would be very expensive. So I believe we have to pay for all the mobilization. With that, there's also a letter that should have been on each, every person's desk, each council member's desk. You may recall, Councilmember Wilson requested that we ask PG&E to put their commitments of writing. Yeah, surprisingly, they did write back. The letter is not a surprise. It includes much of the information that they've already stated verbally. And there's really kind of no drill down on the detail. But we are pleased that PG&E did write and put the letter here to the council. With that, I will go ahead and return to the council to see if there's any questions or comments to say.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Lieutenant, no questions. Thank you, everyone. Also, over?
No question.
I'll remember what all? On this, on this, on the consent calendar, on the whole, on those. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I've got some in the south. I was just gonna ask if, up by the bulletin board, up down, there's a lot of, that gray box that sits there, there's a lot of junk behind it. And I didn't want to forget that because it's something I wanted to get by the time we could get that removed. Thank you. No other questions. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Right. I have no questions, so we will, anyone in the audience have any questions on the staff or... Any hands raised? Any hands raised, any? Any email? Or hands raised? No? Then we will move on to special presentations. Letter of support from the U.S. Department of Energy Grant Application for Solar Batteries Project. Page fifty-seven in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Lawrence, members of the council. I'll go ahead and introduce Bob Weiner.
Good evening. My name is Bob Weiner. I live in Humble County since seventy-four, and I'm here representing a group of investors and entrepreneurs from Bay Area. Our team consists of Wesley Zhang, he is the owner of Posh Batteries and Posh Electric. We're online, it's in the presentation, in front of the information. Also, James White, PhD, he's a mechanical engineer. He's currently on his way to Spain, he's reviewing a couple of projects over there. Considering recycled plastic to hydrogen, so we have a few other projects in mind. But today we come before you to talk about a project in the business park, Rio Del Business Park, which I'm pretty familiar with. I know all the cannabis growers up there. I've been in the cannabis business myself, but we all know what happened with that. So I saw an opportunity possibly in the business park to try to alleviate some of the issues with electric resiliency. And which it seems to be there isn't available up there at the moment, possibly next year is what they're saying, who knows? So as we all know, the power grid is going through a transformation as states and utilities strive to achieve clean energy goals. California Grid is facing an array of fundamental challenges over the past few years. Summer electric shortages, wildfires, earthquakes, escalating electricity rates, and clean resource deployment delays have left California scrambling for solutions. The grid operators, state officials, and utilities have implemented a range of stopgap measures to bolster the grid's reliability. But many of these measures come with significant drawbacks, such as increased reliance on insufficient gas plants and highly polluting diesel backup generators. With Posh Electric, hope the changes that we have beyond achieving its goal will give grid resiliency and its commitment to find an action plan when we start the Power Point. Hopefully Wesley, who called in earlier, can narrate the part of Power Point, but I could do that too. Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention we also are employing the GHD as our local engineer. I think you're all familiar with that. So I don't know if Wesley is there. See if we have to...
I'm here. If you need me to present, I'm happy to talk through the slide.
Okay, go right ahead. We're on slide now. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, because I'm dialing in, I won't be able to see the slide, so I'll just call up the slide number and then I will just talk through the slide if that is okay.
That's fair.
Right. So good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Wesley Zhang. It's a great pleasure to share with you all our proposed project for a solar farm in the city of Rio Del. We'll go to the second slide. So we have been clearly aware of the challenges in getting enough electrical power to the city of Rio Del. And I read one of the letters from the mayor to PG&E last year about the lack of distribution to the city and also its impact on the economic development here. Fortunately, the bipartisan infrastructure law has authorized DOE to invest up to a billion dollar in energy improvement in rural and remote areas. And early this year, or actually in May, the DOE just announced a fifty million dollar federal funding to support small community-driven clean energy projects with up to five million dollar funding per project. And one of the requirements is that the communities need to be less than ten thousand people, which I believe the city of Rio Del feed the bills. And after talking to Robert Weiner, who just presented, he has been a local resident in the Humble County for more than thirty years, and we spent as a team a couple of days in the Humble County touring around the region. And we finalized on the project for a solar plus battery system in the city of Rio Del to provide renewable, a hundred percent renewable electricity to the community. Slide three, please. So we identified an area that potentially can be interesting for this project in the Rio Del Business Park as a potential site. And after talking to the landowner and the realtor then about the property, we think it could be a potentially viable project. We also have talked to Jordan Keen from GSD, which is a very strong global engineering firm with local presence in the Humble County to co-develop the project. Slide four, please. So right now, we are looking at a tentative project with nameplate capacity of one megawatt solar with two megawatt hour battery storage to provide low shifting and energy resiliency. And this will enable up to two hundred homes and perhaps a few business entities in either cannabis business or some other area to be able to get the power day and night. Next slide, please.
Can you hold on one second? I wanted to make a correction on that one slide. The picture that's shown shows the full seventeen acres of the property. We reduced it down to eight acres, so that slide is kind of not representative. It'll be, you know, about half that size. That was on the suggestion of Kevin Cogwell and the city manager, him speaking with the city manager. His project looked a little bit too big, so we reduced it down.
Get it to the back.
Yeah.
Yes. Go ahead.
Very good. Yeah, I said it, if you go to the next slide, I labeled that it's not to scale, so it's just a representation. We are actually looking at probably around eight acres of land and not the entire surface covered by the solar panels here. This is just a rendering we did to show what potentially it might look like. Yep, next slide, please.
And Wesley, I wanted to add something also. Utilizing that land, first of all, it's, some parts are up to nine foot that they have to put in, they'll using whole raised power, solar mounted, whole mounted, would eliminate the need for that because we would be out of the flood zone. Technically, there's different formulations on how to do that. These guys are gonna be moving that forward. So, and one of the parcels that we're going to be using is the person's name is Heidi Snyder, I think, and that it's still considered a brownfield, which you might be able to utilize it as usable property where it is pretty much unusable right at the moment. I just wanted to add that also. Go ahead, Wes.
Without remediating the brownfield, you still wouldn't have the use of it?
Yeah, the bottom line would be we might have to cap it. There's debate on, they're getting, the Snyder's are getting more reports as we speak, you know. So we, this project's just in communications right now and, you know, trying to get it all figured out. And basically, we need your support also, that's why we're here, you know, to even move forward a few more steps. Okay, go ahead, Wes.
All right, thanks, Bobby. So we are in the process of drafting a proposal and preparing for the submission. And as part of the funding requirement, we want to get support from the local community and the city council. And the pre-application deadline is in second week of July. I don't know whether it will be enough time for like a letter, but if not, any form of support will be appreciated. And of course, we want to make sure that the community can readily allow this project to help make this project a success. And we want to make sure that we can really bring benefit both in terms of providing electricity or building houses or increasing tax revenue to the city of Rio Del. Next slide, please. So just a brief summary of the team. So again, Posh, as mentioned, is a California-based...
There he is.
There he is, he's back. Okay, you're back, Wes, sorry.
Sorry, can you hear me? Yeah, can you go to the team slide, please? Are we on the team slide?
Yeah, I think so. The funding source...
Yeah, so so Posh, again, as mentioned, is a California-based renewable energy company focused on battery storage and solar projects as well. GSD has a strong presence in Humble County with a lot of engineers actually sitting in Eureka. And the funding we are looking at is from DOE, it'll provide up to five million dollar per project. And currently, we are in the process of preparing a grant submission. So we believe we have a very strong and competent team here. And we hope to get a blessing of the city council and the local community to bring this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just in conclusion, we're keenly aware that there are many milestones to overcome. But this presentation and request for letter of support will allow us to apply for grant funding to get this project started. So it's a great argument.
Thank you. Can you answer some questions if there are any?
If I can, they're the experts. I wanted to see Rio Del's business partners happen. So that's how this all came about.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, Art, is this something you're gonna manage the, you're gonna put up a solar array and then you're gonna produce power and then put it in the battery storage? Are you gonna manage the script, the microgrid?
Well, we're in talks with Bobby, GNE, and we will be managing it. Our team will manage the facility, but it goes into the grid and then there's RCEA. Or RCEA, we make contact with them also. And they, right now, they have to actually ask for projects, anything over, I think it was a half a megawatt. Otherwise, you can solicit to them, but there's, there is a need. And these are some of the milestones that we're working on right now, you know, as far as being able to sell it to the grid, you know, as a renewable energy, which comes in part of the Humble County Climate Act.
Yeah. And I want to add to Bobby's point. Sorry, can you hear me? Yeah, I want to add Bobby's point that California has a mandate that any solar project or renewable project under three megawatts PG&E, we can sell to PG&E under the renewable energy ceiling tariff. And there's a fixed rate that we can negotiate, and every year they're opening. And right now, there's actually a lot of capacity remaining. As long as we can make sure that we can interconnection, which we have on the Rio Del, on the brownfield in the Rio Del Business Park, because there's a... on the Riedel uh uh on on the on the brownfield in the Riedel Business Park because there's a a a pole there that we can connect directly into the the grid. So I think we definitely uh be able to sell electricity or or feedback electricity to the grid and supply to the local community if we get a project up and running. Over.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, you might talk, but she's still.
No, he's uh.
So are are you looking to do like um Humboldt County order to put in a micro grid up near for your supply of that?
Yes.
Yeah, you way, right? Is that what you're trying to do, is something to that degree that that runs, what if it runs a solar that puts power in the grid and you store energy in the batteries that goes into the grid? Uh, is it, is it an isolatable, um, like a tubing? Um, well, my guess, that it, in the end of the power grid, it will supply power to the business partner, or will it just only be functional when the when the grid is up and running?
Wesley, can you answer that?
Right, I didn't quite hear the the question, um.
What he wants, what he wants to know is if our grid power goes out because of an earthquake or fire or something like that, how resilient will our system, will will our system be able to kick in uh to provide Riedel with assistance uh and power when it when absolutely needed, you know? Uh, is there, is there a mechanism for that, I guess is the word.
Yeah, so I think the benefit of adding the batteries to the solar is that we can be very flexible. Because uh even in the case of, let's say, like fire, earthquake, uh, which uh the city of Riedel uh exp- uh just experienced not so long ago, um, we can, we can be independent because the batteries uh can by itself can provide enough electricity to a couple hundred homes uh for a day or two before the grid go restore. So I think the the benefit of adding the batteries is really to provide the flexibility and resiliency and also reduce the demand charge. Because some of the uh business, they they actually consume a lot of power and by using the batteries, we can shift um uh the energy load from the grid um um uh and and help reduce the demand charge. So I think, I think that's what we are trying to get to is um uh combine the batteries and the solar to provide the flexibility of when and um like uh depends on the 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 rate uh when to use the the electricity from from the grid and when um to to use the electricity from the battery pack. Does that answer the question?
No. What I'm, what I'm trying to get to is to ju- to my understanding, to just place a power source on the grid and you and you're gonna advance that to a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousands, that's how the grid works and you know that. And so what I'm asking is, is the purpose of your, of your enterprise to have a, uh, producing a power source that you sell through some kind of a power purchase agreement to somebody, whether it's R C E A or P G N E, that you're selling somebody power and then you're paying for the management of that grid that's out there, the solar panels and the electronics to do all of this. You're the ones taking care of that, not the city grid at all. Who's taking care of the grid that you're building?
It would, it would be us.
Yes, and then you would sell.
And I I'm sure that Wesley would confirm that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Then you would, you would produce the power and sell the power into the grid and that's where your profit. That's where you make your money. You're producing power, selling it into the grid.
Yes, sir.
And then we're, we're consuming from the grid.
Yes.
The city of Riedel.
Yes, sir, but it would, you know, I I'm not sure how the rates are with R C E A. Uh, it it's um, but they also need to be able to purchase renewable energy to provide uh you know, the cities with renewable energy to become a part of the the climate, what we call it, the uh
Climate Action Plan.
Yeah, called Climate Action Plan.
Well, I I have a pretty good understanding of R C A, but I don't know what.
Okay, good.
But um, there's a lot to one of these grids or source, power sources, bringing power into the grid and managing it so that is taken care of.
Right.
Efficiently.
Well, then, the, what we have done is made our initial contact with with R C E A. We're waiting for uh some feedback from them as far as that that. We're also waiting for your feedback from P G and E because, as you know, they're hard to get a hold of. They don't like to talk to the public, uh, generally. Um, so we're trying to get that figured out, but to the reason for the push right now is this grant funding and it's not, it's not written in gold. It's just a, it's an exploratory to answer all your questions to get our ducks in a row. But we kind of, even though any further, it even answers some of these questions, uh, we would need some sort of support letter from the city of Riedel, uh, just to, you know, however you would like to word it, you know, uh, so we can do this, you know, try to move forward with the project.
Are you doing your own after the meeting?
Sure, yes, sir.
I'll talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I got, I've got a lot of questions.
Yeah.
None of them were at all? Oh, how many jobs would it create?
Yeah, Wesley, do you know that?
Yeah, so um we are providing electricity for the business park. So we, we actually are going to bring the business back to um places that previously uh couldn't get up and running without the um, without the the power. So the solar project itself will require uh probably one to two years of construction. Uh, we are looking at probably ten to twenty uh uh people and we have to pay prevailing wage. And um and maybe a small team on uh on the ground for maintenance. But I think the bigger picture is that what this additional electricity can bring to the city in terms of housing, business activities, um, so, so I think that that is where the 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 main benefit of this uh is. Um, the solar farm itself is not a big employer. Um, we, uh, but I think the uh, the benefit of having enough electricity to bring back some of those businesses that previously backed out because of um, lack of power, um, uh, would be, would be the biggest uh benefit for, from, from, from this development.
With twinning, uh, the taxes and also the employees that work at these businesses.
Now, I've got the other two questions already answered.
Good.
Have been answered. May I put in?
Thank you. Um, I was gonna ask the same thing that Brent did is uh does this benefit directly the city of Riedel? Like, do we get the power? Or does it just go back to the? We've had companies come in and say, we want to do renewable wind energy. We're gonna slap a bunch of windmills up here on your skyline, but you're not gonna get any of the power. It's gonna go back. And we're not gonna hire.
You got the same problem with mill, don't you?
Well, I, why do you say, I, I think the reason we're asking about the power and how many jobs it's gonna create is because we've kind of been down this road before. So that's.
Okay, well, I can assure you that our main goal is is to to make sure that Riedel is included completely in this. You know, that's where I personally started when I called my PhD friends in Bay Area. Yes, so, go ahead, Wesley.
Yeah, just to add to that point, uh, as, as part of the um funding, uh, we need to show that the electricity produced benefits the local community. So um, it's not like we are going to produce electricity and uh ship it somewhere else, right? So as, as part of the project, a part of the funding, we have to prove and demonstrate that the electricity produced locally uh will benefit the local community. And that's why we want to um um uh work with uh the city and 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 figure out the best way um to get electricity to the, to the local community.
Okay. And um, can you remember, we're gonna create jobs, would you hire locally or would you hire people from the Bay Area? Who came here?
Well, first of all, we would go to the unions because we would need that type of uh support. Uh, uh, there's a pretty good, good union uh support here in Humboldt County. I did go to the uh Bill Power uh seminar and it was, they were represented thoroughly and uh I've gotten most of their actions to 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 work with them, you know, because it does take, you know, skill labor.
Right.
To do these things, so, but yes, we definitely would be utilizing local as much as we can, you know, which is possible.
Are you local?
You know, I've, I've lived in Humboldt County since nineteen seventy-four when I got out of the service.
So Posh, electric is local?
No, they're, they're down and you could, Wesley can tell you, he's the owner of the company. They're, they're down in the Bay Area. Uh, he, I know he started with recycling lithium batteries, like, you know, as one of, one of their main projects to make to make the full cycle. Uh, the battery is, you know, fully recyclable, which they previously they hadn't been thinking about that. They, they, Wesley also makes robots that actually help in that process because some of the um chemicals are not good for humans. So they've kind of, you know, have a hybrid type of situation there where they're, they're making the batteries uh from mainly recyclable, I think. And, but he, he would know more. He can tell you more.
Yeah, we're in the Bay Area and we have been making that. Can you hear me? Um, we, we, we have presence in Hayward, California, and uh we've been making batteries uh for all grid and solar story. Um, and, and um, we have, we have a team of engineers that that have designed, developed and um, uh, make batteries in-house. Uh, and we are partnering with G S D, which is a strong uh engineering construction company uh to help with the implementation. Um, we'll try, we'll, we'll definitely, again, that's part of the requirement as well is to hire local, work with the union, uh, pay uh prevailing wage, um, so that, um, yeah, so that we can bring the maximum uh benefit to the, to the local community.
I'm sorry, we're really giving it to you there.
That's okay. That's why I'm here.
I, I think what, what I meant is I'm trying to decide, not deciding, but consider, uh, you know, all the, the myriad of potential uses of that parcel of land because it is one of our only, you know, commercial areas left. Um, and what would be the most beneficial to the city and the citizens of the city? So that's why I'm asking these questions. Um, and we do have a history of people coming in swearing renewable energy and it really doesn't benefit the city or the citizens. I guess that's not a good statement. So I think I've done.
Councilmember.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. Um, first, I, I think I'm missing the part where it helps Riedel. I see that you're, you're making power and I'm all for renewable energy, but you're making power to sell back to us. And you say you're helping the business park come to fruition, but we already have a, a commitment from P G and E to get the electricity they need there to sell to us. So I'm missing how taking up space with renewable energy and they're making up space that in a commercial area where you could put more businesses is actually helping. Beyond the twenty jobs that may or may not come from the area to construct it and the small team that has to manage and maintain it. So how does Riedel benefit from giving up that parcel of land? Uh, Wesley, um.
Maybe I can answer the question, yeah. Yeah, I can answer the question. So I think the fitting tariffs to P G and E is just one option. Um, I think um, um, the benefit of producing solar and batteries locally is that we actually don't have to, if we don't want to uh fit into the uh uh grid. We can supply electricity to the business park through a micro grid, right? So let's say i- if there are um uh five or six businesses that uh be uh able to consume the electricity and uh take the electricity, we can uh directly sell the electricity to the business without uh uh selling back to the P G and E and then back again. Uh, and that's usually called like the micro grid um 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 setup. Um, so, so I, I, I just want to make sure that the P G and E part doesn't derail the conversation. It's not like we are trying to use uh an expensive piece of land to uh, to, to make a profit uh from P G and E. I think um uh because this project will be funded by DOE and there is a stringent requirement on how such project uh can uh benefit local communities uh without, to, without a proof to show that we won't even get a funding in the first place. So rest assured, our goal is not to uh bypass uh Riedel and try to use the land to sell electricity to P G and E to make a profit. Uh, we will be uh scrutinized by the federal funding uh agency uh first and foremost to, to, to prove how these projects uh can benefit local community in the first place. So again, back to your question, uh, we can, we can do like micro grid. Um, again, we are in the early phase of the study in terms of interconnection and um um, um, and, and, and how, how we can channel the electricity to either the business or uh, the local community in terms of the residents and 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 all that. Um, but I think the overall overarching objective here um is uh loud and clear to uh figure out how to use the renewable project to uh serve the local community instead of P G and E.
Um, still not answering my question. Um, we're giving up eight acres of land that we can put businesses on to generate tax revenue to the city to put solar panels. And I get that you're not gonna sell the P G and E for a profit, but you're gonna sell it to the business park for a profit. That's still profit or an area that the P G and E can supply and we don't have to give up eight acres. And we can put more businesses in there to generate more dollars for Riedel. So I don't see how this does anything but help Posh and G H D and oh, it doesn't generate money for Riedel.
So my understanding is that business has, have not been able to set up there and that's why it's been empty for many years because of P G and E's inaction and that's clearly returned in uh Deborah's letter to uh, California Public U T A Commission last year that the inaction of P G and E has uh affected many of the projects, resulted in many of the business pulling out and, 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 and likewise some of the development. So I think the, 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 the uh compromise we have to look at here is that whether we should wait until P G and E do something, which there's no definite timeline, or we go forward with uh renewable solar projects with uh imminent funding, imminent implementation so that we can get business back to the business park um and get real tax revenue, right? Um, again, that, that's a compromise we need to look at and um, um and if, if there is a clear benefit, I think, I think definitely is something that a city should consider.
Okay, but we have a pretty firm commitment from P G and E to have power to that business park within eighteen months. And that, and from my side of the picture, I, I, I've been working with most of the people, uh, with Sean Stubeaker and all that, and I, I know the issues that were there and it, it just recently, P Genie had made this commitment and as of today, I guess, uh, they sent another letter reinstating it. Uh, but up until a few months ago, there was no commitment and that was when this idea was conceived. So we were, uh, basically, we started out trying to help the business park to be able to come to fruition, you know, because there wasn't any
Right.
power. Um, and, you know, I've spoken to, you know, Mossman and uh Alex Mossman and he says that power's coming, but I, I've heard that since two thousand eighteen, I think. You know, that's what he would, you know, they, they've said, but you know, but they all, they also need to have, you know, a certain amount of resiliency and, you know, renewables also. So, and the big scheme of things, it, it kind of would, although it's taking away to eight, eight acres, it's eight acres, it's the previous owner doesn't really want to do any of the, any of the uh improvements on it either, you know, to, to make that property viable. So as an alternative, we can make it a viable property. We'll be getting taxes from I'm assuming you would be getting taxes from that property also. Uh, there's, you know, and also increased taxes from the other parcels that are, you know, that aren't being utilized now. I know there's some some permits that have already been approved, but they've been waiting. Uh, you know, Alex Moore and a few of those other people. So it was a it was more of a gesture to help these people get their businesses up and rolling. So it was a, it was more of a gesture to help these people get their businesses up and rolling and because I know that the Rio Del was depending upon that income also, so that's that's how I got involved.
Uh, thank you. I agree with Councilor Moore, I think that, um, I don't don't understand if this is going to benefit us as much as, um, other businesses coming in. And, um, I I won't be able to vote with a letter because there's a lot I don't understand. Some of it was very hard to understand tonight. And, um, so I I won't be voting to.
You know, that's why we came here to see if we needed to go further with the project at all, you know, because it is, uh, it's already cost us a lot of money and we're pursuing it, but uh, we needed to get your approval and that's why we're here. So, you know, I I I appreciate that. And and the only other thing I can suggest, if they, if you wanted a, any more corrections, maybe we, you know, we should do some more communication and we can clarify some of the issues that you have, you know, uh, but we're kind of on that timeline also, so.
Councilor Wilson?
So the the company that's actually proposing to do this is Posh Electric?
Yes, sir.
And that's the, is that the full name, is Posh Electric?
Uh, right, at the moment, you know, it's it's a connotation of, uh, three different engineering firms, uh, fourth one is a with a GHD and they've mainly been involved in in battery and which includes, uh, you know, uh, building battery, but which includes uh, either grid tied to that or solar and mainly in some of its installations, it's been based upon solar. So they 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 have the engineering capacity.
But my my question is, is there a corporation, LLC, or whatever called Posh Electric in existence?
Yes, 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 they have a presence online and their handles also, yeah, they're.
All right, and then my other question is, you were said you were, you were, uh, working with RCEA?
We've spoken to them.
Who who we spoke to there?
Uh, Mike Abakale, I think it was.
Mike Abakale?
Yes, right, we spoke, we spoke to him, all of us did, we, they, the engineers, the three of them came up and we did a tour of Eureka and we're also looking at other projects, Smol, Henslo, lots larger projects. Uh, but we spoke to them and he was supposed to get us in touch with Mike Engle, I think it is. The, his name, Engle, it was Richard Engle. Richard Engle, excuse me, I've met so many people, it's been, it's hard to keep track unless I have it. No, we've sent him an introduction letter, but you know, right now he's pretty much, uh, hasn't responded back. I I do know that RCEA is transitioning into their own kind of entity, you know, besides purchasing renewables, uh, so maybe that's a possibility that there's, you know, the we're seeing this sort of competition, I I don't know, that's my own, my own, I don't know.
So, um, is it, has anyone in in your developing your plan looked at, when you, when you're talking about Rio Del and benefiting Rio Del? Have you looked at, uh, what uh, taxes or whatever form of recuperation the city would get, you know, um, as far as, um, as far as doing something financially?
How much you, yeah, I've mentioned that and we have to look at the price structure. And, you know, and that's been on our agenda is, you know, how can we make it a benefit, you know, and a financial benefit to Rio Del also? Because I understand that, but to have come to that conclusion, we haven't gotten to that part yet, but that is is definitely in our agenda, so.
And with regard to, because mainly, I mean, you have spoken of of two to three hundred homes, uh, residences, I should say. Um, but mainly you're speaking of the business park, you're you're talking about powering the 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 business park.
Well, e- either or, I mean, we'd prefer to be able to have it come to Rio Del's uh, to meet its housing goals that, you know, are mandated by the state also. So that was part of it. Um, how to negotiate through, weave through all the different entities is something that that takes time, we are working with the DOE and they've given us, uh, I think it's eight hours of free time to work with them, with their consultants, how to intertwine with the grid and, uh, and all this other. We've only used one hour so far. And we have plenty, plenty more hours to deal with that.
And you've spoken with whoever owns the property that?
Yes, Anthony Crank, he owns part of it and also, uh, Haidee, Haidee, yeah.
And you you need, you would need to know whether, so you need a letter of support, what else would you need from the city? Would you, what else would the city be required to do or to commit to or any of that?
Wesley?
Um, the letter is pretty much all we need because, again, part of the, um, grant of funding requirement is that they want to make sure that the project actually benefit local communities. And, um, we 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 want to make sure that our project can really, um, again, either hire local or generate tax revenue and we want to have the blessing of the city and that's, that's pretty much all we need. Um, we will handle all the funding and and application and securing the the land by wo- working with the landowner and the realtor and all that. So I think, I think some sort of a simple letter say that we are aware of this project, uh, we are supportive. Um, that's, that's pretty much all we need.
Okay, well, um, thank you, thank you, uh, is there anyone in? Anyone in, one of the three of you have any question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, sure, yes.
So there, if you have a successful completion of the solar field up there, you're attached to the grid. My understanding, I think it's my answer, but just a clarification, would add an additional two megawatt hours or megawatts?
I think we're down to one megawatt because of the size and considerations, we didn't want to pick up the whole property.
Right, that's kind of our limitation to our transmission lines from the valley and our limitation of actual permits for new construction and development. So this, this would add additional megawatt or capacity to our local area.
This is correct.
Okay, so that's where kind of like Stanville was about a year ago, we got like, this would provide additional and then a PG&E falls through, it kind of be like
There's you have more. Excellent, okay, then. As we know, hopefully, Rio Del can, it has room to expand and, uh, move forward into the century, I I won't be around, but, but, uh, yeah.
That would go.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, yeah, that that definitely clarified that, for sure, appreciate that, that helped us. Thank you.
And so, manager, if I can ask you, um, you, um, we were told that it was a seventeen acre situation, but you and Kevin looked at it and didn't think that would be practical. Is there a reason? Just because you wanted more land available for actual, uh, for businesses, didn't say actual, commercial businesses?
Yeah, and and part of the problem is with the, with the site is it's going to require for the entire site to be properly developed, a lot of fill material um, to bring, uh, the property up, be on the flood elevation. Um, so that is, you know, a really added expense in terms of developing um, the property and so in theory, uh, you know, there could be availability on the front portion or a, or a structure. Um, I think, uh, you know, I think actually Wesley, uh, said it well and that is a, uh, compromise, s- solution potentially. Um, in in that, we're definitely not going to get exactly what we wanted out of this particular area of the business park. Um, and so, you know, we wanted, uh, jobs, permanent, uh, living wage jobs at the site. Um, you know, that's, that's the highest and best use of the industrial property. And so having it sit there to generate electricity, well, certainly that's a doable goal and a good one. Um, you know, the the compromise is 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 that. Now, that being said, we have gone through a number of different developers of the site for job creating projects and nothing has really stucked. So, uh, this is, you know, ultimately, you know, a call uh, of the city council and certainly it'd be more time and more information. Uh, I think they're requesting a letter by July, let eleven, so there is another regularly scheduled meeting coming up. Uh, where we could invite Bob back and, uh, actually flush out a letter, your packet, there is no letter attached.
Right.
Um, and, uh, you know, allow a little bit of time to digest it. Um, I will say it is principally permitted on the property, they want to move the project forward, but they do. And the project is going to be, uh, require, you know, a pretty hefty subsidy from the federal government over to uh, to pull it off, so. Um, so it, it, I, I, in my honest opinion, it's a little bit of a mixed, mixed bag just because we had such high hopes for that, for that business park and, you know, it's impossible five years down the road. It might attract additional different types of development, that is, that is entirely impossible. Uh, just, you know, five years ago, the place is completely defunct with no activity going on on, on, on any of the parcels, uh, other than any illegal activity, so. Um, so that's my.
I appreciate it, okay. And my final question, I guess, would be is, um, like, if you're a utility, which kind of you would be a utility, um, when you're building something, what would be your offset to the city of Rio Del for building electric microgrid? What, 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 what would you say, well, we're gonna, no? Five is a land and put a park, we're gonna put the, the, something over there, we're gonna do this or that. What's the offset that that the utility would, um, provide to the city?
Wesley, do you have an answer for that? Uh, I'm kind of confused with.
Oh, well, I work for a utility, so I actually know, it's a thing.
Well, there you go.
It's a thing, but, yeah, I just, but it's something you can look at, something you can consider, how about that?
Okay.
Okay, that's fair. Um, so are there any hands raised? Are there any emails and no question?
I mean, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, currently, it's like a forty cents per kilowatt hour here, they charge us, so that lower our prices, it's in.
That would hopefully be the goal, but, you know, there's, uh, there's some of that, some of that is beyond our control, you know, and it is predicated by RCEA and also, uh, PG&E and the helping utilities, I think, too, you know, so.
It's, it's governed, what takes place in Rio Del is that PG&E supplies, actually physically supplies the power to this. RCEA sells the energy portion of that and they sell that at half a percent below what PG&E sells. So basically, RCEA is selling it for the same price as PG&E, half a percent, which is by average homeowner, it's probably about two dollars, something like that, is what I'm saying. And so, um, other than anyone else selling the power, the power would have to be sold through PG&E because PG&E owns the transmission lines and that's the only part that they allow you to sell is currently as a separate, without building their own transmission lines, rest of selling the, the generation part for the action. What you would be producing in your solar energy, you have to.
Yeah, and we are working on that, uh, you know, like I said, I talked to Alex Ross Man, uh, I don't know anything, is that with PG&E? Yeah, he would, PG&E is the one that, uh, everybody's been dealing with, I think, for the power in Rio Del business market. That's what every, all the communications I've had and I talked to Alex just last week and he, he said he he, that's not in his, uh, propensity, he only provides, uh, the engineering on hookups, not reversing it. Uh, but he said he would give back to us on that and also I have a Michelle Bush, now she's, uh, we're supposed to have a, uh, he went her on Friday and she was, she works with that government agency that, part of PG&E and she was going to give us the right first.
So you're already meeting with Michelle?
Yes, yes, we've, we've already met once.
Your company is H two humble?
Well, mine, that was just a name that I, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, do I?
No, no, um, I was trying to, John was in the middle of actually asking a question. So I'm just trying to let them finish, yeah, I mean.
Uh, oh, yeah, so I was just wondering that, like, yeah, with the lower our costs at all, I know it's difficult to, well, the power goes, but any state you power the park, the business is over there, so do you guys keep the money from that power generator? If you can like tie record to that business? You know, again, like, I was really all benefited in it too. And then also, just based, if you're, you know, research for this when you come back again, maybe, but, you know, like, with the emergency, the town was down. Uh, the fire department, there was an issue starting the generator over there, you know, and it was an issue, so is there a way to create, I know you can't, see, I'm gonna run down that one kilowatt to the whole town, but can do tie-ins to say city hall, the fire department, you know, maybe a couple main businesses, just keep it down, yeah, so I'm the difficulty there. And then my other thing too is like, so what is the lifespan of this?
It, it, we would mandate at least a thirty year, uh, Mr. Crank doesn't really want to sell his property, he wants to lease it. Right. In a long term because of tax benefits of some sort, uh, so we wanted to purchase it, but he would much prefer to lease it and it would be a thirty year lease that we're talking about because typically the lifespan of the solar panels is approximately thirty years and, uh, as far as the battery replacement, uh, Posh Electric, uh, has would be the replacement vendor on that, you know, and, uh, we, that would be our, our key on that, so, uh, that may be speaking out of turn, is that correct, Wesley?
Yeah, that is correct, uh, most batteries are more than twenty years, um, solar can be between twenty-five, thirty years.
And, you know, I I don't know, this is just off the top of my head and possibly, uh, there could be some resiliency that we could, uh, install batteries directly at the fire department, at the, you know, at the water park here. I I know you have a, a, a microgrid through your water, I think, to get that battery backup for about eight hours or something. Like, yeah, so we could work with Rio Del and providing, you know, trying to include that in, you know, directly, direct benefits, you know, uh, that all has to be, you know, worked out, you know, that that could be actually part of our present, you know, presentation to DOE also, so.
Any more questions? Sorry.
Uh, this, um, he, you said, you know, H two humble, who? Is H two humble, you?
That's me, I, I, what I, I started off with is, okay, I have this business, every, all the generators we're in Humble County. I've never used a large generator, most of the areas with seventy five hundred watt. Uh, freaks me out that there's so many generators running cannabis businesses. And I was looking at the alternative because there is a mandate also in two point O in Humble County to change the generator from diesel, carbon, to either solar, which would reduce, uh, the productivity or come up with alternatives. Now, uh, some people are changing over to do propane, which is available around here, but it still has emissions on that. So I was looking at, you know, smaller, portable generators and that was just, that was my project. That's why I got involved with the, the, this company. I called my friend, Dr. Wyatt, I said, what do you know about hydrogen? He goes, funny you should ask, since I started off years ago when I grad, when I graduated from MIT, at Ballard Power, you know, one of the largest hydrogen companies around, so we are still looking at a project, uh, changing the waste plastic, not recycled plastic, but waste plastic to hydrogen and generating electricity from that also, that, that's a bigger project than, uh, than smart, and so we've talked to Chris, Chris and Rob up there at the Hay Harbor District also.
You did, you did it correctly?
Oh, good, okay.
Okay. So, not that I'm gonna be here in thirty years, but when thirty years is up, would you be uncomfortable? Would you have to take them down and empower?
Well, if that's part of the, uh, we would prefer if this, if that's the technology of the day, you know, uh, to, to have it continue on, you know, for the children, the grandchildren and such, but, you know, uh, the idea is, is, you know, to keep it maintained and to actually have it reused. So this is not that.
But I thought you said after thirty years, they were, their life span?
Well, by that time, well, you would replace it, you know, there would be hydrogen in place, so. Hopefully some of the, you know, mounting, some of the mounting will have to be replaced, I'm sure, because rush to it, who knows? But so we, we plan.
Awesome. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Wesley. Um, I can ask the council if you want to bring this back um, on to first meeting of July. Um, but it's a receivable file, there is no action gonna be taken tonight, but, um.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, again, we, we want to make sure that we, we even get like some sort of verbal support if, if uh, possible to make sure that we can move ahead and.
Wesley, thank you very much. Um, there is no action gonna be taken tonight, but I'm trying to poll and find out if we want to bring it back on the first meeting of July, the sixth, and which would give time, if so desired, that we could get the letter to you by the eleventh, if that is the policy council. There will be no action taken tonight, other than deciding whether or not we're gonna address it in two weeks. So, but thank you for, for being here. So, that's the.
Okay, sweetie.
The sixth of July, because the fourth is, um, a Tuesday, so the ordinance says when it's on, a holiday falls on your date, you kick it to the Thursday.
What was the eleventh of July?
That's when they will get the letter.
That's when they want it, right?
Yes, if we were gonna do the letter. So, does anything? I don't get it right back.
Right, right, but I, I would like some work. There's a lot of things you have to answer.
Yeah, I, you know, we just appreciate communication on, on that, so we can answer them, you know, in sites like this, you know, I mean, some things, uh, most of them.
Wesley will be here, that will be great.
Yeah, Wesley will be here, uh, James, like I said, James is on it. Looking at the, uh, this trash to, trash to, plastic to hydrogen conversions over in Spain, right?
Well, thank you very much. We will, thank you very much. Thank you, Wesley. We will, um, then bring you back and welcome you guys back and see you on the sixth of July.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to special call items, discussion on the city council meeting time, page sixty-five on our package.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gornson, to the council, uh, uh, this item is being brought forward by staff, uh, initiated by staff. Uh, just kind of discussing the city council's meeting time. Uh, I, as far as I know, we're probably, we have a start time, uh, one of the latest uh, in McCann, I mean, that's six thirty. Uh, most of the other cities, um, Uribe, Arcata, Fortuna start at six. Um, again, so the, the time is set in the ordinance, and so we wanted to just bring this up to the council to see that there is interest in moving the time up uh, to either six or five thirty start time. Uh, schedules allowed out for those who are, uh, uh, you know, consideration given to those who are working. Um, so, uh, so with that, as fast as simple as it gets, it does require the ordinance to, uh, list the, uh, ordinance, so uh, there would need to be a first and second reading in order to change the time here on a thirty day waiting period.
Very well. I think the council, I would love to, it's five thirty, but I understand that convinced, but I'm gonna go to council member Orford.
Um, honestly, five thirty works for me.
I'm gonna go to the mayor, what's up?
Um, I am okay here earlier. I was gonna vote for six just so I could eat dinner, because y'all don't want me in here when I ain't gonna eat dinner. But, uh, if I thirty works, everybody else, it works for me. I'll be early. We can.
There you go, yeah.
Five thirty is fine with me. Well, if you do six, two, but I, I thought, you know, the five thirty thing, actually, you know, it will get up earlier. Um, I'm not working anymore, I'm a week, I'm tired, so I don't have a construction age yet, so five thirty, four zero.
So I'm gonna choose, I went to first because I, first of all, I'm scared of making a president, it's a, it would be better for me. I don't agree with five thirty. I know, so everybody will say excited. Get it done, maybe two thirty.
Just one other consideration of the time is, is five thirty. We do occasionally have closed sessions.
Yeah, yeah.
And so those closed sessions with them typically starting at four thirty.
Oh, okay. Four, yeah. So.
Off the end, so, okay.
Okay, so, uh, six, everyone good with six?
Six will work.
Do we need to, uh, uh, I guess, if public, you'll have any by, that's why I'm I wanna break, can you be there at six? Absolutely. All right, then, so this is, maybe. Any hands raised, emails?
Yeah.
Anything's up? Okay, so is there a motion to bring back an ordinance to move the city council meetings to six o'clock on the first and third Tuesdays of the month? So, there's a motion in there, second. Sorry, we have a motion in the second. Motion carries five zero. Ordinance, ordinances and special resolution. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number three nine nine point two zero two three, amending ordinance number three three five dash two zero one five. Chapter thirteen point ten, section two forty-one of the Ria Del Municipal Code and adding section, and adding chapter thirteen point ten, sections twenty, two hundred forty-two through two hundred forty-six. Property tax liens for non-payment of delinquent sewer bills for customers that do not subscribe to the water service and a means of collecting the delinquent charges on the property tax bill, page sixty-six in our package, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Gornson, to the members of the council. Go ahead and turn it over to Travis.
People, Mayor Gornson, members of the council. City staff is looking to amend ordinance number three three five dash two zero one five, published as Ria Del Municipal Code, section thirteen point one zero point two four one, to allow the city to send delinquent sewer charges to the auditor controller to add them to the tax roll as a lien. The proposed ordinance amendment includes references to the Health and Safety Code five four seven three through five four seven three point seven. Health and Safety Code five four seven three allows the city to send overdue sewer charges to the auditor controller. Including that the amendment by the city would conform to such Health and Safety Code, allowing the city to submit the overdue sewer charges to the auditor controller. So long as the city follows the protocol laid out in the Health and Safety Code, which includes, but is not limited to, preparing a written report including a description of the parcel's proceedings or and the amount of charges for each parcel. The city must give notice and hold a hearing regarding the delinquent proceeds, and also publicly post a report in local newspaper. For collecting charges on the tax roll, the report will be mailed to each person whom any parcel or parcels of real property are on the report. During the hearing, the city must hear and consider all objections to the written report and the notice. And upon conclusion of the hearing, if the report is adopted by the council, it must be sent to the auditor controller by August tenth, to be added to the tax roll as a lien. This item will be returned to council on July sixth for further consideration, approval and possible adoption. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wilson.
So, if I understood this right, we, we currently have the ability to enact this, so we, we have.
We currently do not have the ability to enact this per our city attorney because it's missing, uh, section five four uh, seven three point seven, and that is the process that the city has to go through taxes and it to the auditor controller.
Would you just redirect? Is that what we're approving designs?
It's the first reading, uh, where we decide changing the ordinance to.
To include that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, uh, to my question.
Um, only question I have, and it's just because I don't know how this works, um, is this, this can be used for retroactive payment as well, or is it just from this point forward?
So it'll be everything that the tax do, so anyone that accumulated tax due bills, uh, going back to our, like, maybe, uh, we would send that balance to the auditor.
Yeah, it will, it will be some way to make it?
Uh, it, it would, it would essentially take whatever balance was due and would send it that way.
Okay, good. No questions, thanks, thank you. About how many fumbles do we have right now for the?
You know, that, that number is evolving and changing all the time. I don't have an exact figure, but I, I believe it's around thirty or forty.
Okay, and, um, it would be on a tax lien where in five years they would eat, if they didn't pay, and five years they would have to pay, or it would go, it would go, they'd have to pay it for that in their taxes, like, would you should be nuisance to the payment?
You know, I'm not a hundred percent sure on exactly how, how that would shake out, but essentially it would be assessed on the tax bill so that if property to go for sale and go through escrow, that would be one of the obligations that have to be, uh, taken care of for the warranty change hands.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the public?
Yeah, uh, the Netflix houses that probably had the water shut off at that point already.
Yes, exactly.
And I did advocate for, for, that these armed people that are probably financially struggling both of the most, so that's one way to help state, you know.
So, John, uh, next time you have to come up with.
Oh, okay, I'm glad.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Gornson. So, in the, in the, in the process of how the city does this, um, with rentals, how do they, uh, so you have, do you, do you, um, don't find a landlord if they have water? That, that this is gonna be, because they're not making property tax.
Correct.
So, is some, is, is a provision in this so that the, the landlord gets where, but like now, tenant is, if they're not paying their water service bill, they get, they get a notice, but the landlord is not receiving notice. I mean, at least it doesn't on my case, I've never received it by tenant, but like, the landlord has. Yeah, so does this make a provision so that the landlord does, somebody finds out that uh, there's a lien on a property?
Yeah, so in the, yeah, that's a great question. In the procedures, there's that process the city has to go through, and part of that process is actually sending a written letter or notice to the owner of the parcel in question to let them know, excuse me, that there's a balance, and it will be sent to the auditor controller if they don't pay that bill. Yes, sir.
And we've got the four, it's actually back to the auditor.
Yes, this all has to be done before it's sent to the auditor controller, they have to, they have to announce that they make sure it follows a proper protocol, and then it's sent, and it has to be done by August tenth.
Thank you. Any emails? Um, so is there a motion to, um, approve the first reading and, um, go on to the second reading of, of ordinance number? Um, ordinance number three three five, to amending ordinance three three five dash two zero one five, chapter thirteen point ten, two forty, section two forty-one, and adding chapter thirteen point ten, sections two hundred forty-two through two forty-six property tax lien for non-faking of delinquent sewer bills.
So.
If there are a motion, is there a second? If there are a motion in the second, motion carries five zero. Now, on to, um, council reports. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. We have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow, that is Wednesday at three P M here in the council chamber. If, if they're listening, um, would like to attend, um, the vice radio over this past weekend was a wonderful, wonderful event, and I wish we'd thank the Lee's Department, the Fire Department and our community resource center, um, it was well attended, far exceeded any expectations. It was a really, really fun event. I saw a lot of children having a really, really good time. And I hope that, um, something we can do more and just those types of things. So, thank you all. It was really, really fun. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. That was about the only thing others did today, was a wonderful program, and, um, the resource center really well with giving our elements and other stuff that it did. And they really enjoyed it, and everyone, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, I'm actually, uh, perfect. Um, we had H W A, you approved it in your
Consent calendar?
What do you call it? Consent calendar. Some of the, some of the provisions that applies to the thirteen eighty-three, uh, movement, they have this, they put them out to M O U. That made you call it a little. That was around, uh, M O U, covering the, uh, uh, for the, I'm gonna tell you, it pays for some of those. Um, Austin, the thirteen eighty-three, so that's, that project is moving a declaration, I would make. You want more?
More to follow.
Yeah.
And, um, councilmember Ford?
Um, I have an H T O meeting on Thursday, and, um, if anybody can make it up there, they're, uh, doing a presentation on affordable housing up in Arcata. They're bringing, uh, are working on a sixty unit affordable housing project, um, and they're hoping would kind of become a blueprint for the rest of the county. Other than that, uh, if someone watches the kids on the stream, please don't push pause. I know they're not supposed to be there, please don't.
It's, it's a comment, it's not like you're on H T O, but it's, yeah. Yeah, you may have noticed in the news that they brought out some information on the underpass, and you didn't know, always they said it would be done hopefully by the end of two thousand twenty-five, so that's apparently ahead, which is a good thing for the community to be. Uh, you know, you don't want, my wife was seriously damaged and injured there on that underpass and, and section highway, so it's great that this is finally coming to be a reality, which I never thought we would.
Right.
And so, thank you, Mr. Arf, for your involvement in here.
And I have a Cal Cities meeting on Friday. Friday, and, um, it's, it's nice to be back. I've been missing for a few, it's life. So, yay, I'm back. And, um, everyone have a good rest of your week. Thank you, Police Department, or, um, and Fire Department, everyone, where the rodeo is, so, awesome situation. And thank the staff just for being, oh, the good staff you are. Guys rock it. Their motion to adjourn. So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay.